Anyone would like to have pulled before the meeting? All right, so no hands, we'll move on. Mini reports, final adoption, there are, this is in regards to changing things to the work session. It says that they've been, and all know that this is for the final time, but I don't remember the board member compensation being on the last order of the.
And the change was basically taking out all the committee meeting language because that was still in there as committee meetings and then we changed to instead of an event board members attend a committee meeting, it was attend a work session.
Right, but I'm just saying, is that to be posted? Because I don't think that we had.
That's about to be posted.
For the final time, it says. Okay. Did I already make any compensation? There was one there last week.
It should have been. We didn't have it on the work session, but we had it on the board. Mr. Moore had asked for it to be on the board meeting.
Okay. I don't remember if there's any on there. It's not, it's like there is some language on there about committee meetings, but.
It should all be written.
The copy I'm looking at, it's not all, I'm looking at the wrong one.
Yeah, you may have to put D markups, and that may actually get you to view the right one.
There's that markup on there, but I'll give you, I'll give a few on that. I don't know if anybody else has any issues on those too. Let's see, and then we'll move on. Not to be posted, that are required by the time. Annual order B, there's none attached, but it looks like there's a reference. Those, those are all instruction, it says, so there's been really bad instructions.
That section, that's that section four. It should have been, because we're just reviewing all of our annuals.
Okay. Does that include any, like, the retention, promotion, like that, that we had done?
I have not seen anything from last year.
We need very good policies, we need instructions, actually, we just reviewed. I have four minutes.
Okay. We may want to pull these from this month, I mean, we don't even have copies on here unless we all want to go through and visit each other, revisit it next month.
Well, that's what I did last month, too, so I put in all the individual policies, I just referenced which ones to look at, because that way we can study the manual, but I can definitely have some of the individuals that I listed.
I don't know, do we have everybody else's preferences? I mean, when I looked at it earlier in the week, I didn't see, I guess initially I didn't see if it was listed, so I didn't know which ones we were reviewing at the time. There are preferences on the board, I don't, I don't want it to be, like, just my opinion.
It's only a hundred dollars, they had to just. The first time we did list them all, we'd go review, and then after that, we just put under rationale the ones to review. We can always go back to the policy, and I'll have to just click on that one. But I can, I can definitely attach them.
I think that's okay, those are the ones we are going to review. Isn't that what we're discussing, is whether to put them all on there?
Right. I mean, this is something that to me, as far as board governance, this is pretty important as far as policies go, so as long as everybody is going to agree that they're going to go to the policy, they know and look up each of those policies, I'm totally fine with that, but we just need board members to make a commitment, but that's what they're willing to do. If they want them all there, so it's easy access to it, then that's what we need to ask staff to do, but, you know.
I might need the access.
Okay. I'm just doing that government board. Does anybody, like, on my head and review this one?
The only thing will be interesting with the new system we have here, you can type it right on your laptop, you can make notes of what was discussed, or you can, you can talk to them.
Right, right. So you don't have to go back and forth between the two?
Mm-hmm.
Do we want to take those off, or, because usually we just look at, I think, it's just kind of like an F or a bit of another consent, we want to just move those to January, or October, or get some time to look at it. Moving on, we'll go on to zoning facilities.
You want to make the switch here? Let me turn on the screen.
Sure.
Excuse me. Huh? If you just hit the HDMI, I think it'll come up. That's what it did before for me. I did this earlier at work just for that.
Windows screen.
Pardon me?
On your laptop, it windows screen.
Yeah, it's, it's set. Okay. I'll duplicate it, see what that is. Shouldn't that be the one I need? Everything's good. You know which I see mine? I thought it was three, four.
Oh, on the TV? Is that three?
That's three. It should be working. Let me sneak by and stand, okay? Pull it loose, dude.
Yeah, you do. Try now. Are you leaving on three?
Okay. Okay. I'll pause.
It's all right.
The, can I just go ahead and speak to these, please?
Go ahead.
First thing, there's an architect's report, I did not feel like, because it's just an update, if you take an opportunity to look at it, it's an update from ESA on the things that they've been working on, kind of gives you a summary of each one of the projects they're working for us. I have asked them to do this each month for us, now that we have several projects going, so they will update this report for us, and just kind of a timeline of what they've done since we last met. So unless you have some questions, we'll move on to the next thing. The next thing on the report is the report from, their report on Central High School from the architects, again, it's just an update on where we are, there's some pictures that they had taken in their walk-through the other day, they actually did a punch list walk-through in Area 7, what we call Area 7, which is basically the band room, music suite, and our OTC rooms, that is basically finished, and so they did a punch list, they're actually coming back to do the punch list next week, Dave, in Area 8, Tuesday of next week, in the auditorium, entry hallway, restrooms, and that's pretty much it. So then, final fire marshal review on the 18th of December, we start moving furniture in on the 19th, and we'll be ready when it's, it's come out. So we've got that, of course, we've got the Hewlett-Spencer report too, with their, from their independent firm who does the assessments and the walk-through, and we've got pictures of that, and Mr. Spencer's here, if y'all have any questions about that for him. Bring that up if, well, the next one is, though, I'm going to call on Jamie Spencer, because I think he has a report to make to you on Marvin Wright Elementary, and I have something to go on the screen here as he shares that with you.
Well, thanks, Stan. I'm just going to talk from back here, if that's okay, if you guys can hear me, you've probably seen that the handout we're talking about. We've gotten around to closing out the job at Marvin Wright Elementary. You guys remember our guaranteed maximum price at the time for the job was $5,438,224, that was the Hewlett-Spencer price to, to the board. Again, that gave you approximately 18,000 square feet that we put over there at Marvin Wright in that addition. Some of that was renovated space, of some old classrooms and the newer classrooms, as you're aware of, built eight classrooms and expanded the cafeteria. Took us about six and a half months to do that job, would have loved to have had eight months, but we did it six and a half, and everything worked out great. So we're happy to report tonight, and I know this doesn't happen in Murray County on building programs in the past, so this is going to be new for some of you. Tommy Dudley's been on the board for quite a while, I know, but we're actually announcing tonight that we are returning to the Murray County Board of Education $169,571, which are the savings from the project underneath the guaranteed maximum price. So we're happy to announce that, and glad that we're able to, to bring that to you. I usually have a nice big ceremonial check, but I didn't bring it tonight, in fact, I couldn't find it. So I looked everywhere, I may have to get a new one. So Abby, my wife, reminded me that it might have went down in the house incident we had a couple years ago. So anyway, but happy to report that, and if you have any questions on Marvin Wright, we'd be happy to answer them. And again, I know Steve and Ryan, everybody that works with us, you know, we're humbled and so appreciative of the opportunity to do that project. It was a challenge, but it went very smoothly, we had great communication with the principal there, Ms. Massey, as you guys know, she's just top-notch. We had great communication with Stan and Dave throughout the project, and with our contractor and our superintendent, and we pulled it off, and it was tight, and y'all know that, and it was, it was, it was a success. And we look forward to having many more reports like this with you guys in the future, so thanks again. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. If not, then we look forward to doing a similar report with maybe more savings on Columbia Central High School, so, all right.
And I'll just add that next month, we will try to bring you a close-out report for the entire project. Obviously, theirs was the much largest piece of that, but we also had other pieces of that, with furniture, low voltage, you also approved an additional cost for the fire alarm replacement, which we, which was not a part of the guaranteed maximum price, and we actually, I think we ended up with a couple thousand dollars of savings there, and it looks like we're going to have about 15,000 to 20,000 dollars savings in the low voltage that was approved as well. So those, those funds are funds that, all of those that were in the 16 and a half million dollars that will go back into that, so that's, that's where that came from, so I'm assuming those just go back into that, that we will use for repairs at our other schools. I don't think that even, if we need to bring that as a recommendation next month, we can, and we'll bring a final report and do everything on that. The next item of business that we have is, there is a status report from Trane that you have, which is our monthly report, kind of is an update on all the things that they're working on. We do have John Tine and Randy Malvin here from Trane, if you have any questions for them on that report.
I did have one question.
Sure.
I saw one here, there's utility savings issues here at Columbia Central that you guys were working on, it looks like.
I'm going to let Adam speak to the, he's here with the M&amp;B side of things.
Okay.
For the, on the, if it's utility savings.
And he may not be familiar with Columbia Central, because Columbia Central is not actually in our M&amp;B program.
Okay.
So I guess I'll, I'll go so far as to say, it's been, what, Stan, about two, three months ago that we went through a utility analysis process, just for the sake of validating the performance numbers that we're showing on the schools that are part of this measurement and verification from the original Trane performance contract, and we did identify at that time that the utilities in this particular school were a little higher than what we would have expected. I can't speak to what the outcomes may be, I know some of our team has been working with the construction contractor on how the systems are configured here, but that's really the limit of my knowledge there.
And I'll add to that, what I know about that, we asked them to do that because we noticed our utility bills were high. Now, there's some contributing factors to that. One is, until March of this year, we were actually paying utilities on this building and the old building, so we had the old building still in operation, they tore down the old building in March. So since March, we're starting to see them level off, but there are also some features that, that we've asked them to study, and Trane's been involved, working with the HVAC contractor, lead company, working with the folks with Hewlett-Spencer and Bell, to try to do an analysis, if they think there's something that's not fine-tuned, that may be generating some additional electrical uses, and that's an ongoing study that we're doing, just because we're paying higher utility bills now than we were in a new building than an old building, but like I say, for most of that time, it's because we had two buildings, and so we're trying to understand how much of the difference is.
Were any of the, did we have a separate meter for the contractors in this new building?
We did not. So we, let me take that back, during the construction of this building, we did, but when, so yes, there was a separate meter when they just had the transformer, there was a changeover at the time they did, but when we were operating the old building, and then we took on ownership of this new building, it was our, and since then, we may not added a second transformer for the work that's going back here, so we're operating off of one transformer now, or one, one meter now, so that has not been, since we did the switch over to this new building.
So the continued construction would be part of it?
Yes, it would be. We know that the continued, yeah, which has still been going on at the same time we're operating this building, so we're trying to sort through all of that, to see if that's contributing to it, or if there's actually something in this building that's been. The one we'll really know is when everything's over with, and it all gets turned over, there's no construction going on, no power usage for that, but they've been looking at some things to make sure there's not something else.
That's just ongoing?
It is ongoing, yes, ma'am. But we do know, last year, and I'm about to introduce, Adam would come up and make a presentation on something else, but last year, we generated quite a bit of savings, but we ended up in electricity with a higher electricity bill than we had the year before, and it came from this building, that's where the electrical usage was.
Didn't we work with Trane though, during the, I mean, didn't they help us?
Yes, in the design, so that's why they're involved in all that, yes, ma'am. But I think it has more to do with the fact we just were operating an old building and a new building at the same time. Yeah, thank you. Adam Cavender, my mind was just like that, probably everyone's for that today. Adam Cavender is the person with Trane who operates our measurement, M&amp;B Measurement and Verification Program for our Trane project, and so we have just finished year one of that project, and so we actually generated in excess of the savings they had projected that we were going to save, and so he has a summary of that, which you have in your packet, and I've asked him to come and speak to that briefly with you, so, because it's, it's probably more complicated than I can explain, so Adam, if you would, coming up, we'll put that up on the screen.
Sure.
Because you, y'all may not have met Adam.
Speak to him.
Thank you.
It just, my mind went blank, I don't have it written down.
Okay, yeah, so Stan said, my name is Adam Cavender, I am the Measurement and Verification Engineer assigned to this project that we have with you folks, and what that means is, I'm really the local representative for bigger process that we conduct on an ongoing basis. Anywhere where Trane has a guarantee in place that's, that's stated savings that we're claiming we're going to provide to you all through the project, we have a process, Notice Measurement and Verification, where we actually collect the utility bills from the schools that are part of this, and analyze those, we weather correct them, so the changes in weather from one year to the next are taken into consideration, use software that outputs performance numbers, and what you're looking at in this packet here is something that I put together from those numbers. We got really good performance in this portfolio, I can't always say that with all of our customers, but with you all, we're seeing really good performance. What I've highlighted in yellow there, those are really the take-home numbers. For the schools that we monitor, which, Stan, if you can scroll down a hair, this is the list of schools that we actively monitor on a monthly basis, and so these numbers in yellow, those are taken from the schools that we monitor. The utility spend on those, with weather correction from year over year, 30% decrease in utility expenses on those, and actually, the savings that we engineered and expected to see from the project, we try to do that with a conservative approach, so hopefully we hit our mark, and then some, in this case, 33% above what we engineered, so strong performance from all the schools. What we want to see is the green bar below the blue, which, the blue is where we've engineered. The only one that has missed a little bit is Mount Pleasant High School, but there have been some operational challenges in the last year there. I know that, I think there was a little bit of a chiller issue, and so units were running excessively just because of that issue, and I think we've gotten past that now. So otherwise, you can see a nice downward slope to all of these bar graphs, and that's exactly what we want to see. So the bottom line here, really, the take-home information that I came, I'm always happy to come and visit with the board when I've got good news, is so far, since the construction period of the project, $170,000 in excess savings, so that's, that's a big win for everyone, Trane included, so we're happy to bring that information to you all.
And I'll just tell you how we realized that, I don't, at the beginning of the project, we reduced our utility budget by the amount of the debt service payment. We are paying on a, a bond, 15-years bond, and it's about $375,000 a year, so we just took that, we just cut that out of our utility budget and moved that over to the bond payment, and so even with that taken away, we have experienced savings, and like I say, this last year, the only place we didn't experience any, overall, because this just, those are the schools, but through all of our schools, was in electricity, we were up just a little bit, and we found that, that had to do here. If you all remember in gas, before we began the Trane program, we were spending over $500,000 a year on gas. Last year, we spent less than $200,000 on gas, and we've seen savings in water as well. So that's how that's being reflected to us in our budget. And of course, last year, what we did was, we took that money and moved it over to cover some other needs that we had, if you will remember, and of course, we hoped to experience that same thing last year, we kind of, I mean, experienced that same thing this year, the savings in, in gas that we have, because we still are carrying a budget of about $400,000 for gas.
And then I would add to that, everything is looking good in the first two months of billing data that we have, which is, at the time that I updated this, two months of data, $14,000 ahead of where we expect the project to perform, so this good performance shows every indication of continuing.
Do you update your numbers on Marvin Wright, since there's that addition?
Yes, so, so we do what's known as baseline adjustments, when things change in the building, we, our energy engineer will make calculations for the impact of those changes, and that gets applied to these numbers. So for example, Marvin Wright's gone to natural gas from propane, we have to make corrections to that, so that really is just an ongoing communication line that Stan and Dave and I try to keep open, so that we do correct for those things, yeah.
And I, I think you all have also made those changes to the baseline as we've updated equipment.
Yes, anytime.
We've replaced equipment at all these different schools, that makes an update, because the equipment that comes in is more efficient than equipment replaced, and that's reflected in that.
Yes, so, yeah, adjustments are made when efficiency goes up as well, so that the work that we've done doesn't end up getting credit for energy savings that are actually from equipment that you all have put in since our project. So the balancing of these numbers works both ways, and we do that on an annual basis, so we track it throughout the year, and then once a year, we issue a, what we call a reconciliation report for the project, and Stan and Dave and I will meet to go through that report, and that's when all the things that have happened throughout the year on this set of schools are accounted for, and the final results for the year are presented, and then we start a fresh year.
Don't want to muddy the water, but as he shows, these are the schools that were in the original program that we signed up. You all have just given us approval, we're pursuing still the funding through the state of Tennessee for our second phase of the program, for the lighting improvements, and it'll, it'll work just like this, it'll be the same sort of process, where they'll do a report with us, track it, and do all that every month, and then.
That's right, so as long as you all continue with the 15-year term on the debt service, this, this program that I am representing is designed to give you assurance that the investment that you've made is continuing to pay off in the way that you should expect it to. So, yeah, we'll continue to do this.
Will it be the same set of schools for the second?
No, the lighting was a different set of schools, it was all the schools, I think we left out three or four, but it's all those that were included in that.
How did you choose those, these schools?
If I remember back right, Adam might be able to, these were the ones that after Trane did their original audit, they projected we could save enough by making changes to pay for the whole set. So the, the other schools wouldn't generate enough savings to be in the program.
That's correct. Happy to answer any questions.
And that, that program was actually, that audit was actually done in 2013, and the program began in the fall of 14, I think, if you remember that.
Standard, our original lighting program paid for itself?
I've been told that it did, Mr. Dudley, that happened before my time here, but I was told when I had, when I wrote that it already paid, we're not paying anything on that anymore, it's been paid for. So, so I assume by the time we got it paid for, it had paid for itself. And that was several, probably about seven or eight years ago, maybe?
No, it was right when I first came on the program.
So maybe a little longer than that.
About ten.
Yeah, we upgraded all of our fluorescent lighting from T12 to T8, basically, that's about all I can tell you, Dave probably explained that better, but, which was a savings, now we're talking about going from fluorescent to LED.
Anything else for Trane? Thanks for delivering us good news.
Yeah, sure, always glad to do it, great to be here.
Bring us checks. Yeah, checks, put up there, right.
Thank you.
Coming.
We have our roof reports for the roof jobs that we're doing at Calioka and here, is the one at Calioka finished yet? It's getting close.
Not finished, we're still waiting on the metal to get up there.
So we're close to finish here, I say here, Withthorn, which is right over there, Withthorn is probably mid-January, before a closeout of it, so we're getting close on both of those, to have those finished, they're long projects, but those are in the packet if you have any questions about those. We have our regular capital projects reports that are in the list for you this evening, if anybody has any questions, but we will answer questions. I do want to speak to the next item, though, and that is, according to Policy 3.208, which was approved this year when we went through and did our policy review, we're to bring you an annual report on. you an annual report on facilities, and according to policy, it was to be in October. And let me just tell you, this first year, we're a little bit behind. We could have made it last month, but I wasn't here, so I just asked to put that off till this month. So, we put together, and we tried to follow kind of the structure that's laid out in the policy as to things that we report about. I've got kind of a cover letter here that explains to you kind of the status of our facilities. And let me just share what remains true for us is what has been true for us for some times when it comes to facilities, and it's what's true for many other school districts our size. I was not here at the work session last month, because I was at this meeting, the K-12 Facilities Forum, which is attended by about 70 people who have the same job as I do for medium and large-sized school districts across the country. And all of them agreed in the discussions that we had that their challenge is dealing with adding new schools to accommodate growth, but keeping the old schools and the aging infrastructure repaired and updated, because doing to do those at the same time is just a financial drain for many systems. And there are challenges that everybody was talking about. They also talked about the challenging of growing costs of construction. I was in one session, I thought I just, this is not in the report, but just it's my time to speak to this, and so I'll share with you. I was in a session where the Chief Facilities Officer for New Orleans City Schools was speaking, for the Chief Deputy, Deputy Chief Facilities Officer for Chicago Public Schools, the Associate Superintendent of Facilities and Operations for Seattle Public Schools, and the Deputy Superintendent of Operations for Dallas Schools. That was the four people on the panel. And the question asked was, what are you spending to build schools? The lowest one of those was the guy from New Orleans, who said probably a minimum of $235 a square foot. The lady from Chicago said $260 a square foot for construction, $360 a square foot all in. The guy from Dallas, $250 to $350 a square foot. The guy from Seattle, $500 a square foot. That's what they're spending to build facilities. And he said, you ought to see how many cranes we've got in the air in Seattle. The guy in Dallas, as a matter of fact, I think he said we have 63 cranes in the air in Seattle. The guy in Dallas said, that's nothing, we got 87 cranes in Dallas. And you all know, in Nashville, we've got, the last count I heard was 38 cranes in the air. I don't know how many it is. But I just say all that to make the point that, I would love to say, we're not Seattle and we're not Dallas and New Orleans, but we're Nashville, and Nashville's becoming Seattle and Dallas and New Orleans and all those other cities. And so, we're experiencing the same, same challenges that they are when it comes to building costs and those kind of things. But it, but it, but it's, it's a port, it is a part of what we deal with. So, what, what we did is we put together this report, and we put together a table of contents there that again kind of lines up with what the policy told we should speak of. The first is a schedule of facilities, and I'll just click on that one and show you. What we listed was all of the facilities that we have as a school district. There's 23, the 21 school buildings, the central office, and the maintenance department. Total of, total of about almost 2.3 million square feet on about 475 acres. As I've said before, I think it's a pretty sizable real estate portfolio that Murray County Schools has to take care of and be responsible for. And so, that gives you a picture of what those buildings are, when they were built, and then when additions were made to those. The next thing that it asked us to talk about was enrollment and class sizes. What we did was, this is a little chart I've been keeping up with, that just is the end-of-year enrollment numbers, and that also has the capacity of our schools, and so it shows you where we are at current capacity. I broke it down by area, you could break it down a lot of different ways, but it kind of helps us to see, because we're growing at a different rate in different parts of the county. But that was a little thing that we thought. And then we followed that, because it also asks us to make growth projections with the growth projections that came from the tenure facilities plan, which was done by the Belmont Center for Educational Improvement. I can't remember exactly the long...
Of systems.
Of improvement of educational systems.
Yeah.
Which Dr. Registered, I always just say Dr. Registered report, and everybody knows what we're talking about. We are working to try to find a way to update those, because as new developments come into the county, we know that those numbers are changing, because some of those developments were not available when they made the projections. Now, I would like to tell you that projections give us a clear narrative to be able to say, here's where we're going. And as we all know, projections are just projections. You have to wait till things actually happen to know what's going to happen. But the trends continue to match up to the projections, and the new growth that we see lend themselves to the projections. But ultimately, we're going to have to wait and see where the projections are. And at this point, you and the county commission have tried to be proactive with those projections in trying to fund and meet needs for additional students before they happen, because there's been a, there's been a commitment from the school board to not have to go to portables. We see those school districts who've not been able to be proactive, and the reactive, the reactive response is a lot of portables. We may, who knows what the growth is going to be in this county, and if we'll be able to stay ahead of the curve on that or not. It was interesting, I don't know if you all saw the article that came out in Tennessee in just this week, Dave Hall brought me, Williamson County needs 10 new schools in the next five years. I can't imagine getting there. I actually rode back on the plane from a lady with, a lady in Houston, and a school district outside of Houston who has my job for that school district. We, we actually, we took the shuttle back to the airport together, got on the plane, we're sitting next to each other. So, we talked, they're building six new schools at one time. She said, they'll never try to do it, it'll drive you crazy. Six new schools at one time. It was incredible, that the things she, she has to keep up with, and she would read and written reports on those schools that are being built in her school district. But, but it is, you know, there are challenges that we obviously know that we have ahead of us, and so the projections are at least to help us start to try to do some planning for that.
What did your conference say about portables?
There wasn't a lot of talk about portables. There wasn't anybody who really addressed that issue. It was primarily about dealing with building new buildings and repairing old buildings. So, there, we didn't get into that topic. The next area has to do with capital improvements, and what we put in the report there for you is, we gave you, first of all, we updated, we've shown you this report before, and what we did since, since we were doing this now, we just went ahead and went through the end of November. So, since July the 1st of 2016 through the end of last month, we have spent or had committed to spend over $100 million, when you add on top of that the $65 million bond that was just issued for the two new schools. The $220 million out of the central, that's how much we've actually written in checks out of that money during that time period. Out of the, the other amount, the $21 total million bond, we've spent about 18, almost 19 million of that. Money that came from the school's fund balance, 2.6 million. Other funds, we had like the refund we got from Train and some of those things, 79 million. The bond, so that gives you the total of 170, 107 million. And we went through and tried to illustrate, some of these you've seen before, the access controls, the lock sets, the fire alarm replacements, the boiler replacements we did, the automated controls, that number continues, we just actually added to that HVAC replacement. We've spent $3.5 million on HVAC replacement during that time period. We are really starting to reap the fruits of that labor, obviously from some of the energy things, but we have gone to a place as a school district, and we have fixed all the problems everywhere. We still have some schools, we have some issues. But I used to get lots of calls about, it's too hot in our, my building, it's too cold. We rarely get those calls anymore. We seem to have very good working systems. Bleacher repairs that we made at some of our schools, repainting. Santa Fe, Spring Hill High School, right now at Randolph House painting, doing the repaint. Mr. Ford's back in the back of the room. But schools look really good. If you haven't had a chance to be in Santa Fe recently, we repainted that entire school this summer. It looks really good. Football field lighting, Mount Pleasant High School, trash compactors, architectural services for the new schools that we've been doing at the Barbenright addition, the Barbenright addition, the purchase of the property on Mailermore Road, the site work which has begun. Mr. Spencer didn't speak to that, but if you've had an opportunity to drive down Mailermore Road, you'll see that dirt is being moved on that site. Cell foots is up, a lot of work going on there. Central High School Phase 2, which we moved into this, this year, and then Central High School Phase 3, which I just mentioned is going to be finished in just the next couple of weeks, and it is gorgeous. I think everybody will be very glad to see it. Remember that, right now, we are scheduled for an open house on January the 14th at 2:00 PM Sunday afternoon, and we'll be sending out invitations for that. Baseball restroom and concession stand at Central High School, engineering evaluations that we've had done, several of those engineering firms have been working with us, some structural, storm drainage, site surveys, system plumbing, architectural engineering, and design of parking lots, elevator renovations with Thor, and Highland Park, new bleachers at three of our elementary schools, Highland Park Baker, Baker and Mount Pleasant, and I think I took some pictures of Mount Pleasant, and they weren't good or something. We didn't get the Mount Pleasant Elementary bleachers in here, but they look, they all three, we let the schools pick, and they all picked those bleachers that all look exactly the same. Roof replacements that we just talked about at Withthorn, Calioka, and also Woodard has been approved, and work is beginning there. Drainage projects where we're doing all the drainage improvements around our schools, and those continue to be ongoing. The new carpet, which has just been put in at Withthorn Middle School, in the library and the computer lab, some plumbing fixtures, sewer line repairs, a lot of things that we're working on with plumbing. System-wide electrical repairs that are being made primarily in the electrical. We're doing a lot of replacement, and we're going to talk about one of those in just a few minutes. Ceiling tile baseboard replacement at Mount Pleasant Elementary and Joseph Brown Elementary. Canopies that we put on some doors at Calioka that were listed out in the EMG report as being needed. And then what we have listed for you is, here is the list of what's remaining out of that 16 and a half. It totals to be about $3.1 million that we're still working on, but I will point out that, you know, a lot of it falls into three schools that we've been encouraged to kind of wait on until the board gives future direction. About a million dollars at Hampshire for HVAC replacement, a little over a million dollars at McDowell, and then there's a little bit still left at Mount Pleasant, I think it was on the first page, 180,000 at Mount Pleasant.
That's just last year's money.
Pardon me?
That's just last year's money.
That's the...
The 16 million.
Yeah, 16, right.
Not the whole year.
Yeah. Now, there's also left, out of the original first-year list of needs, if you remember, that total list was 29 million, there's a list of about 9.5 million of that that we still haven't addressed as well. And so, that's listed for you there. Then after that, we have listed, we did a walkthrough this spring with our principals of all the buildings, and we made a list, principals, principals, what do you see? Some issues with your building. And so, we've started trying to address those. You can see a few of those we've been able to check out, some that have been lined out because we've got those taken care of, but we have obviously not been able to do all of those. And we've listed those from those walkthroughs at those schools. And then we have given you, from the EMG report, over the next five years. Of course, if you remember, the, the original year one list was 2016, we're now into 2017. They said, based on the age of your equipment, here's what we expect you need to reserve, need to set aside for potential repairs in 2017, 2018, 2019, '20 and '21. We just went out five years. We didn't go out the whole 20. Now, we have gone through, there are a few of these items we've already addressed, because they already broke. They didn't wait, even though they said, we project it will die in 2020, it died in 2017. So, we fixed it, and we've adjusted the list and taken those off. And then what follows that is the detail on that list. So, there's several pages that details out what all those things are. And then at the end, we went ahead, because it talks about utilities in, in the policy, this was, again, we presented this report to you earlier, but this is our utility rank amongst school districts in Tennessee, and how that we're doing there. So, that was the report. Again, this is our first year of doing this, we hope to refine this, add to it, and we'll present this to you annually, and we'll do our very best to make that happen in October next year, as the policy says. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Okay, thank you. I know that was a lot of information, but thank you for your patience as we went through that. The next thing, at the last meeting, you voted to approve a budget amendment for money to come from fund balances, we've done every year, for capital repairs. It was about $670,605. Now, we, as I told you, we have presented a list for over $900,000 of some immediate things. We went back and prioritized this down, and this is how we would recommend that we, and these are budgets, none of this has been bid, but this is how we would recommend spending that money right now. The first $100,000, we would use like we've been doing for the last couple of years to hire a summer work crew and do painting. Following the schedule that EMG gave us for trying to repaint all the schools, the next two schools up would be Withthorn Middle School and Angel Porter. That would be the two schools we would try to paint in 2018. The boiler at Mount Pleasant High School, we also need to replace the hot bowl, hot water boiler. We have a, a building-wide hot water system there that has a boiler and a tank. These, those are cost estimates we've been given by Train. The chiller repairs at Mount Pleasant Elementary, we, we have to do those before we fire the chiller back up in the spring. It's shut down for the winter. Fire alarm replacement, we're having, we're, we've got three or four schools that we're starting to have some buggy things on, on those. And we, we put from the EMG list, you go back to those when they said we should do that, those actually show up in 2021, but we're, those two were really, and you all know what happens, if they die before we get them replaced, then we have to go on fire watch, we have to, we've been there, done that. So, we think we should go ahead and address those. And we did the, that's 70,000, 65 to 70,000 is what we've been spending to replace a fire alarm system. Carpet replacement at Mount Pleasant Middle School was on the EMG, Dave specifically asked us to do that. It's pretty bad shape, what's in their library and in their offices, and so we, we think we need to do that. And then there's a canopy at Santa Fe Unit School, and I didn't get a year there, because in the EMG report, it didn't give us a year, but it addressed the canopies, but it didn't give us a potential year. But we've got a canopy that basically is just full of holes, it's just, it's the one out front where the bus rider line is in front of the school, that we also need to replace. And we think we can do it for those numbers there. So, that's, that would be our recommendation, we go ahead and set this as a budget for those funds.
Any questions? So, if there are no questions, is this something that we can put as an incentive or this recommendation to spend all these, since we have already burned the budget?
Yeah, and then what we do is just go, we get the bids, prices break back.
Right, and you can go get bids on all those.
We would still have to bring the bid back to you for your approval.
Right. Sounds good. You made that to be considered.
The next thing is, in the system-wide electrical repairs that we were doing, when we got to Withthorn and we did the repair and shut down the system, we found 17 breakers that would not shut off. They were frozen. Now, I don't know if you know what, and all of them are 100 to 250 amp breakers. These are not the little 20 amp breakers in your home, these are big breakers. Now, a breaker's supposed to kick if there's an electrical problem. These breakers won't kick, because they won't shut off, so that means could short out, could cause fire, could have serious problems. They were able to repair four of them, and they have brought us a price to replace, and this is Train who's doing the work for, to replace three of those, I mean, not three of those, 13 of those. I think that's what it is, either they've repaired three and replacing 14, I can't remember without going back and reading it. Seven, two, and four, how does that, that adds up to 13, that is correct. $14,865. There's 7, 125 amp, 250 amp, and four 200 amp breakers. And so, we're bringing this. We do, we did, there was money designated in the... the EMG funds for electrical repairs, even though we, we signed off on those train, we left about $300,000 in there because we knew as they go through and start doing these repairs, there might be more uncovered. So we've got the funds left in the EMG repairs to do this. So we would recommend that, that this bid to you.
Any questions for consent on this one? Sounds like we can move this one to consent.
Consent, okay. And then the last thing that we have is, you did also approve the additional funding. You did a budget amendment. It is time to issue our, we were issuing quarterly POs to GCA. Since you did move the money into our budget, we're recommending that we just go ahead and issue the PO for the remainder of the year. We still are evaluating them. We will be bringing you next month. Will be the time for the second quarterly review of their business so we can be deciding what the future disposition of their contract is. But we would recommend that instead of issuing it quarterly, since we do have the budget funds now, we would go ahead and issue a PO for the next six months.
How are your monthly reports that you're getting from your principals? Are they better than they were last year?
I must confess, I have not had an opportunity to look at them since we did the last quarterly review. So I don't know.
Is it possible that we can hold off on this until we get those reports?
We've, while we're out, we spent up our PO. So we got to issue one in January. If you would, so we can't pay another bill. We can pay December's, but we can't pay January without issuing a PO, another PO. We've spent the first six months of PO. Now, we can issue a-
And we can't change between now and January?
Either way, we're going to have to keep until the end of the year.
Yeah, so we have to pay them.
We can't replace them.
We probably, if we were going to make a change, we'd make it in the, when the end of this year happens. And that's what I'm assuming. Time we go through that.
I would just request we get a real thorough report because personally, I'm not happy with it. Every time I go to a school, you see something that is just obvious.
And I've had some personal conversations with principals. Matter of fact, I had two today. One said they're doing a really good job at the school. The other said they're doing a horrible job. And I'm still continuing to find that.
I think it depends on their personnel.
Yeah. And these particular schools both have the same account manager. You know, there's two account managers, one who manages F school, and the same account manager, one school is doing really, so it has to do with the personnel in the school.
But we also need to see if their reports reflect that same thing they told you today.
Right, yes.
Because if they don't, we're fighting ourselves.
Right. And that, we've emphasized that, we've met with the principals and emphasized that multiple times. We emphasized that again to them the last time we met with them.
Stan, between now and the end of the year, whenever we get ready to look at making a change, can we get some quotes and everything before then?
Yes. If, I think when we make this next report in January, we will need to make a decision if we're going to make a change. So we could go ahead and probably by February or March bring, what we'll do is we'll put out an RFP, request for proposals, and we, I've had many calls of people who want to submit a proposal to us. I've probably got 10 companies who would love to submit one tomorrow.
Do we know what the cost is to bring it in house versus contracted out?
We, when we've looked at that before, we've projected that would be about a 30% increase over what we're paying now because of the benefits that we would have to pick up. And not only that, not just benefits, they, the equipment we have to purchase because we don't have any equipment. Because whenever we made that change, all that equipment, that was eight, nine years ago, all the equipment is gone. So we don't have any buffers and scrubbers and mop buckets and janitor carts.
It's a major, a major expense.
So the electric's cost. So we could look at that, and we can bring that back to you if you want to consider that. I just know as tight as our budget that might be, may be hard to do.
It sounds like it's competitive though, if you're getting, if you're getting that many calls for-
Yeah, oh, there are a lot of people.
It's got to be competitive. So, but we need to fund this for the rest of the year. That we've got to do. But look at, carefully look at these reports.
And I think if we make a decision in January, we would have plenty of time to get out the RFP and bring you back if we want to make a change.
Sounds good. Is there someone else we can move to consent? Go on to new business?
That's the end of our show. And I will be very generous.
Page 17, compliance report.
This is just more of why we have given some information to all of the schools and there were no compliance issues.
So it doesn't need board approval, it's just more than a five?
I have inexperience with this report, being used to department. It just needs a, requires a signature.
It does say date of board approval on it, so is that something?
Yeah.
All right. Is everybody comfortable with that? Can you put it under consent? And you're comfortable, all the principals are comfortable, there's no compliance issues?
Yes.
Sounds good. Next item would be the strategic plan. Is there any questions about that? Breakfast was my farthest under update based on the information that was provided.
This is the final draft. If we approve it at the board meeting, that would be done.
Yes, ma'am.
We're not going to have another half day session?
We still have another half day session, but we're talking about how we might want to use that.
I'm not trying to beg you to have it. I wouldn't be mad, but I just do.
I think the thought was that maybe we would use the half day to look at implementation of the final plan as opposed to further revision of this at this point.
I did notice that it still has that the proposed budget was 105 million, and I think we had asked her to put the actual budget in there. It's under funding and structure at the very beginning. Page six.
Okay. See with that, the just specific dollar amount for?
Well, I mean, it wasn't 105 million, so.
That's including federal, yeah, federal funds and everything.
That's everything?
Yeah, it's everything.
Okay, that's fine. Let's just double check.
Any other questions about it? Now, we can move that to the consent agenda. The next item is central office organizational chart. We received more detailed information of that last time. This is kind of an FYI, but if you want to discuss this, it might be a good time.
I have a question. Can I, sure. I understood that we were losing one of our, I can't read them on here. Was resigning.
Who was resigning, Sharon?
Retiring.
Retiring.
Yeah.
I'm just asking this. Is there, is there any way that that position can be spread out in that portion of the, money can be used for other things that we need for at central office?
I would like to repurpose those funds. However, in my conversation with superintendent and the bureau, how would he like to use those funds? Or if not, we can just cut the position altogether.
When Byron Hendrick from Lean Frog came in, the reason why those three positions were created were to reduce the number of direct reports that went directly to the assistant superintendent. So it was to, it was, because before those positions, all of those things reported to the assistant superintendent. So one of the things that he was worried about is with too many direct reports, there's less oversight and less intervention. So if you disseminate that, then it creates a better, I guess, a better supervisory model, if you will. But that's something we could definitely look at. We can look at it.
I, personally, I would like you to look at that and see if that's some revenue that we can generate for other positions. I know there's positions that need to have their salaries raised.
Sure.
And I know that our CFO definitely, we're looking for funds for her position. So if there's any way that you could do that and repurpose that money for it.
Sure. We'll discuss. Dr. Worden will discuss. No problem.
At the same time, though, I don't want our supervisory staff to cut too thin. As I said, I mean, we've got some issues. I'll just throw out the Northfield deal was one where I think the supervisory staff may have been too thin or at least not doing their proper jobs. So I mean, I, I don't want us cutting them too thin.
I think she makes a good point, though, that we have an opportunity here to maybe restate, have, you know, maybe reshuffle those kind of responsibilities to free up some of the money that's budgeted for central office jobs. We do have some requests from the accounting department for position that we, I do think and hope we can fund. After all, that's one of our biggest concerns right now is that.
And then I understand, I'm willing to look at it. I just might say, if I'm going to look at it, I may be fighting for retaining the position just as much as.
I hate to say Jan retired, but it's an opportunity.
It's just an opportunity. You're one of a kind. So we can't fault you.
That's right.
I'll just say, as we're looking at structure, I still feel like ever since we lost the elementary supervisor, we've had a gap there. And I think based on the information that we heard from children that have been in our schools and kindergarten all month, that bus is still moving along, the kids are still getting further behind. So I just, I go back to, I feel like foundationally, that's really important for us to have an emphasis on the, on the true side of it. And I don't see it here in the way that we're currently set up. And you may have, you know, you may have your own triggers in place in your department to address that. But right now, I don't feel like we are really being served well in that area. Anything else in this chart?
One more. I'm sorry. Oh, my breath grabbed here. It's hard. You got to pull it away.
Gotcha.
Look at Stan's organization. I mean, we're just jostled right out of it.
So take a look, look at, look at, look at, open the, open the PDF for me. Which one, which one do you have open? Is that the Word document? Go back for a second.
The thing, when you gave it to us, I'll run off. We could read it better than it is on this.
Is that better?
Yeah, it's a lot better.
Okay, we need to start saving those PDFs. I'm not uploading because, because the first two are Word docs.
That's okay.
That's okay. No problem. The first two are Word docs. I can go ahead and save those as PDFs.
I think that's actually safe as PowerPoint.
Is it a PowerPoint?
Here it is.
Oh, gotcha. Would it be, is it a JPEG image? Okay. We'll, we'll look to save, we'll look to save these as best optimization for an iPad moving forward.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Anything else on these? I mean, ultimately, I think the organizational chart with the policy that we have in place is really just an FYI, and it falls on the director to make sure that it's being managed efficiently and effectively. And so ultimately, that falls at your feet. So we have to evaluate that. But, but I think at this point, it's really just an FYI. So we can probably move this to an FYI. There's no objections. We'll move that forward for the next meeting. Other business, I think our next item is renewal of student engine software, which I think is about high now.
That's correct.
That's required for all students and staff.
Correct.
Is that like state requirement? We got to have it.
It talks to the state, they have to say we have to have it.
And we actually get a discounted rate for using it?
I know we had two invoices in there because I guess it changed companies or something like that. So the, the both of those invoices, it's a-
So what we discovered was that the bill from the previous year had not been, had been paid. That's what we discovered. That's why the price is, I believe it's 47,000.
So we didn't pay the 23,000 last year there?
It was not taken care of in previous year, correct?
They couldn't hedge that?
Probably beginning there, but we discovered it now and it's somebody that has been taking care of.
But that's going to come out of our funds from this year, the budget that we had for this year.
We'll have to pay it.
Do we have the funds in there to pay that?
We've looked at that. We do have the funds in there now.
So what are we going to be cutting?
No, we have enough there in that 390, in that 72415, 399 account. We have enough there. It's just, it makes things tight. It just makes things a little tighter. That's the principal, principal account. So as I understand it, every school pays a portion of that service. So we're just paying a double portion of it this year due to the not taking care of the previous year.
I know. When that conversation occurs for the new pay.
Daniel, sit down.
I can't hear you.
She just said that needs to be brought to the extension and CFO that didn't get paid last year. I guess the question I have is, I understand that you have the funds in there now, but I assume we did not budget 43,000 for this period. We probably, we budgeted the 20, 30,000 or whatever that we expected it to cost. So-
Correct.
Where are we coming up with the additional funds? What does that mean that we're cutting?
I'm hopeful that with the addition of the additional BP money we're going to receive, we should get about 1.2 million based on enrollment, that that will uncover any overages that we have there. But it looks like we can do it at this time. And then appearing over to anyone, we're going to recover later with the BP funds. Don't like that, but this is kind of a-
And I know that this is something that, you know, it didn't get taken care of last year. I just, I go back to, I hate for us to cut something for our kids because somebody was not competent in their position of paying bills because we didn't budget for it. But I mean, I understand we have to do it. Does anybody not want this to be on the consent agenda?
But back on that, where did that bill go?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking, I'm going to find out. Because typically, when a, when a bill doesn't get paid, there's a follow-up every month. You continue to get those notices. And not only that, we have a very good, we have a very good relationship with Power School. And Jim Swainy and I talk every once, once every two to three weeks. He would have notified me if there was an issue. So I need to, I need to get with Jim, and I also need to get with Eric and find out why it wasn't paid and what happened.
Do you have a good relationship with Chalkable? Because that's who it was under.
That's, Power School bought Chalkable.
I know.
So now it's part of the same company.
Right. But I'm saying that this invoice is stated for August of 2016 from Chalkable. And so if they hadn't, if Power School hadn't bought them at that point, then he wouldn't be talking to you about Chalkable still.
But he can, he can still go back and look at historical information. And so I'm going to try to find out why, what happened. Because not, because not only that, I mean, we would have gotten a notice saying, you know, you haven't paid your bill in six months, we're going to shut you off. We never got any notices. And it was never shut off.
If they kept sending us new notices, that would mean VACO did not do their job.
And that's what I need to find out. That's what I need to dig into.
Maybe we'll keep this on the agenda and not under consent so you can raise back that additional information.
Sure, yeah.
Moving on, Lenovo laptops, Brown Elementary. Looks like that's just for them to purchase a set of-
去买, yes, ma'am.
All right. Any questions on that? That'd be moved to consent. All right. I ready diagnostic. That's where she put me now.
I just sent that information. I just go to you.
Any questions on that?
Yeah. With, what's bringing Bill Miller Cooley to want me to use? How is it different from what we're currently using today?
The I ready, I ready?
Oh.
The I ready is the, is the math adoption that we have for the district, and they have- And they have an instructional diagnostic that is a little more aligned to the state standards than what we currently have.
What we currently use?
Uh, we do have Power School, uh, Power School assessment. And so some teachers like it a little better. They feel that this will be the way to pull their school up a little more in tune with the new team reassessment. You know, the test just changed last year, so. And that's been the hard part, to keep it up with what the state's going with the standards. I mean, every two to three years, it's changing, so I'm trying to keep up. And so this company is the company that has the adoption right now.
But if this is better, would we want to look at going countywide?
We would. I'd like to know what their results are going to look like based on using this. The other thing is, is we met with the Power School, one of the Power School representatives last Wednesday, and we're looking at maybe getting their upgraded services that does what this does. So we can cut maybe four or five programs, which will save us a minimal revenue for the district. So we think that hopefully by next year, we can cut maybe four or five programs that we're using right now.
Are we paying for licenses for teachers at spring middle school to use Power School though?
I would say yes.
So are we going to get a reduction on that bill?
I, I think what we have a little bit of issue is that some don't feel that Power School delivers enough and some do think it is. So kind of trying to get the vision on the same page about what is the best platform to provide form of assessment.
Right. But it sounds like Springfield Middle School is saying they want kind of power that the I ready. So what I'm saying, though, is that can we get a reduction in the Power School license so that they are not using it?
That's what I could ask. That's what I could ask them.
I just don't know that we need to pay for two assessment pieces.
But I know they are using, so, so.
But if their leadership team feels that this is the best thing they've done, then I mean, you know, I may, I may want to have two cars in my garage, but so I can pick and choose whichever day, but you know, I really just need one.
Correct.
Any other questions on this one? I think if you can, if we can see that maybe there's a difference in the amount. I mean, I think we all certainly wouldn't give them what they need, but if we already paid for one, then.
I think this was also driven by a group of teachers that came to the, the October work session. They were pretty vocal about what they thought that they needed to, to bring schools up. I think that was the sixth grade team. And I believe this is, this was driven out of the resources that they said that they would like to have for sixth grade. You know, I think that they felt that what was in Power School's non-reverent enough for them and they want to try something different. So I think this will be a worthwhile purchase. I think we can get some real meaningful data out of what they're going to try and then see if this is a tool that we like to use for all of the middle schools across the district. And then maybe we can cut part of Power School, save the money and then repurpose that money for, for something else. But I think it'll be worthwhile to try. That's just my two cents. Thank you. Sorry.
Is that coming out of the same budget that we guys spent dollars, five twenty three thousand dollars from too?
This is actually coming out of their, their school budget.
Their school budget?
This is how they're, this is how they like, hey, this is how they like to use their, their part of revenue. They just want permission to spend more than ten thousand for me. It's coming out of their pocket.
Any objections to that? And is there a commitment on the consent agenda?
Yes.
If you will, though, please bring back for us if we are able to accept me from Power School that we think that's important going forward. All of those deals, just as an FYI, school bus advertising revenue recommendation, it looks like that's the same as last month. Part of the information.
The bus, the bus, what we did is we added the chart that shows how much we generate for everything.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Which was still less than that thirty thousand that we're going to need to pay.
About twenty, and we get it in ten monthly payments. So that, that's what y'all were at here, just trying to give you some information on that. And but we left our recommendation alone just so you could decide what you wanted to do. So we, so basically, it's, I guess it's in your house court is what y'all want us to do. If you want to just wait, keep accumulating the money and come back to you later, we can do that as well. But we are accumulating the money just as it comes in. We're putting it into a, we're just accumulating.
One of, one of the suggestions would use it for Maria Arts and pick up what we say and what was original.
Was, well, right now, we've only generated about twenty two thousand dollars. And that will come in monthly. So we won't be at twenty, if we, if we didn't sell another bus ad, we'd be at twenty two by the end of the year. So.
I think we need to pay the Maria Arts.
Okay.
You know, I, I mean, I don't think that.
Sorry, you take that out of fun balance.
I think we could take it out of fun balance and let these funds come into fund balance. But you know, they're going to accumulate it. It's the offsetting event.
What was that money originally planned for, Mr. Braden, you know?
Pardon me?
The money from the bus advertisement?
We haven't decided what we must spend. And that's still for you to approve where that.
So we don't know if we want that to come into fund balance or.
Right, yes, sir. That's right. Yeah, so we had broader recommendation to possibly spend it. You know, our original recommendation was to spend half of it, go to the one-to-one, the diploma program. The other half to be divided among schools, to be spent by teachers for their classrooms on a, to be decided on a school-by-school basis what they, how they'd recommend spending that. Then at the meeting, it came up, well, possibly first, we want to take care of the Maria Arts out of it. I think everybody's saying now that so far, we haven't generated enough money to do that.
Can we just add a budget amendment into covering the thirty thousand and have that to be voted on at the next meeting?
Sure.
Could I, one thing that's kind of, oh, not only the ten.
As far as I know.
Uh, one of the things you said there about money going to the schools for the teacher in the classroom, you know, we, uh, we approved three hundred dollars per teacher and then we got two hundred and fifty dollars from the BEP. And how is that allocated? How does it get down to the teacher in the classroom?
It's probably not going to be a staying question.
I, I could tell you what a little bit, because actually, one of the people in my department when I first got here was handling those allocations that somehow got passed over, though it had nothing to do with us. My understanding that the money is divided and so it, their allocation's set aside for them to spend. And so is it two hundred and fifty? It used to be two hundred. It may have increased to two fifty. They're spending, they're spending the money the same way as BEP.
Yeah.
So it's housed by the bookkeeper at the individual schools and the teachers submit qualifying receipts. And then the bookkeeper just ducks and then keeps them, keeps them informed of the running tally of how much they have left in their accounts.
And teachers have to have a purchase order.
Yep.
You got, it has data for something, though.
Yeah, it's being used just like the, just, it, although it's, although it doesn't have the same rules as BEP, BEP talking about consumables and non-consumables, you guys just deposit a three hundred in their, in their accounts. They still have to turn in qualifying receipts.
So they got basically five hundred and fifty dollars this year?
Yes, sir.
Now, does the teacher, did the teacher get the whole five hundred and fifty dollars or did the school take a cut of it before they passed it?
The, the state actually this year changed the law where there's no more pooled money. Two hundred, two hundred goes to every individual teacher and then the board this year agreed to put an additional three hundred and fifty in each teacher's account. No.
And that one passed the school.
Yeah.
The front office took a cut before they passed it.
Yeah, a hundred, a hundred stayed for BEP pooled that the leadership team would decide that they wanted to spend on a hundred ones to teachers. State law changed this year and affected July one. All two hundred went to every single teacher.
And all the rest of the state, yeah.
Yes, sir. They're working with the bookkeepers on, getting, guarding your receipts.
That's right.
So yes.
All right. Well, I guess that leaves us to next topic, which is, I mean, it's got several budget amendments skirted in there. It looks like a lot of these are for, for title funds. Anyone wants to ask any specific questions about one of those? Probably be from the family.
In his answer.
Oh, okay.
She can't even answer.
Oh, okay.
Protecting.
Any questions on this?
Yeah, I think. On seven zero three four? No, seven zero three five through seven zero four one. Can you kind of give them the explanation of what that is?
Is that Title I neglected?
Yes.
Is that one of those?
Yes.
Uh, that's a new grant. In the past, that money has been allocated to our district, but we always were able to release it back to the state. It was administered through the state. And this year, the law changed and they give it to the LEAs and it's for the educational services for children like at King's Daughter School. We serve them. That those funds are given to King's Daughters for those children that are neglected and abandoned.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? All right. And then we'll move on to the next one. If everyone's okay, we can put this on consent and also add in the Maria Lines one as well.
Now, how, I, what, I miss, pardon my absence. What are we paying Maria Arts for?
This is for the Maryland plus promotion that they, during the Grasslands Greenery campaign, they, I think, spent a hundred thousand, of which they've asked to spend thirty thousand for it. So they're paying seventy and we're paying thirty. And they did last year.
It's a, and it's a partnership between local businesses and the school district. Maria Arts is a part of the.
The forums that they've held. It's really various people.
One, one time?
It's a one-time payment.
Yes.
To bring a verse. If you don't want to have to be honest about it, we can just add it to the division.
I was having a division, I might, I might.
Okay. Sounds good. Moving on, I mean, the next one's our, kind of a big group.
Yeah, and Ms. Gagley Animal apologizes. She's laid up. She went to the doctor today and the doctor gave her antibiotics and said, go home. So she would have been here tonight to explain everything, but she, what she wanted me to tell you is her cover letter pretty much covers five four three through five four one zero. But she said if any of you had any specific questions, she said, you know, if, if you want to give those to me or if you want to relay, relay those directly to her, she can email you back and answer those specific questions, but I can carry anything back to her that you need.
I think the specific question is how do we, how does this continue going forward? I mean, we're really talking about her spreadsheet recommendations. There she's got, what, I guess thirty two thousand dollars that's needed this year. But if you look at what our budget, budgeted number was and what she proposes with these new salaries, it's about a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars over what we would have budgeted. So how are we going to address that in next year's budget? I mean, I think that's probably a question for you as much as it is for her.
Yeah.
We can't, I mean, I don't think we can spend BEP money on that because we've got a bunch of needs within our system that are being addressed otherwise. So I don't really want to spend it on additional salaries personally. Other people make that difference. These are some big jumps in some, I mean, in some of these positions.
What, what is the thinking on funding this? If they're not budgeted and.
So, so going down to the CFO recommendation spreadsheet, if you look at the, the summary notes across the bottom, we do have unspent funds for FY eighteen. There's an overall amount of thirty two thousand that could go towards the VACO bill and still leave enough funds to fully staff the business office of recommended rates. Uh, the positions of chief of staff and manager of tech could also be funded at the recommended levels for this year. Um, the previous request of one hundred thirty eighty two fifty five to fund these adjustments for BEP funds for this year would not be needed. So she basically had a chance to dig in, dig in deeper based on what Mr. Bates gave her feedback on at the last meeting. And she was able to dig in deeper and discover some, some savings. So keep in mind that the salary adjustments for FY nineteen, FY nineteen would be an increase of one fifty five, four fifty one. So, so we have, I mean, we have various, various avenues to address that. A couple of them, of course, is BEP with increased student enrollment, increased money coming in. The other one is asking the county commission to increase our budget. Uh, the other one is making a, making a huge chunk investment beginning of the year for shortfall out of fund balance. There's multiple, there's multiple avenues in order to address that. But that's stuff that we could definitely, that we definitely need to attack and talk about during budget season as we talk about FY nineteen budget development.
Well, I think we kind of need to talk about it now, though.
Okay.
Because, I mean, if we are going to approve these and post these positions, then that's going to have an impact on next year's budget. And so everybody just needs to know that we're going to come up with a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars from somewhere and.
But we won't be spending seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the next budget or three hundred and sixty. Hopefully, VACO, I mean, those funds are going to come out of fund balance, correct?
Yes.
So hope, I, I would hope that we would have a department that could operate and maybe like she said, even though she's picking up rocks daily and buying things under them, maybe we come to a point where we can find savings and be more efficient. And I have to use fund balance for this debacle.
Yeah.
I don't mean this in any disrespectful way, but that we continue to pay, in the payroll department and other departments, excuse me, what we weren't paying, we're going to continue to get what we had. And we've had nothing but problems.
We should, we've paid over for VACO and I don't really feel like we've gotten a lot of value for that either, so.
It's good VACO. We want, we would have needed VACO if we were paying decent money in the first place for a position. I mean, we're paying, and I don't know what the position paid you for, but if you're paying fifty thousand dollars for a position, for that normal position in any other industry pays eighty or ninety thousand dollars, you're going to get what you're paying for.
Well, I think you bring up a good point. I think it would be valuable if she could provide us where she got these salaries. I mean, did we just pull them out of thin hair? Did she look at comparable systems? Did she look at other industries? Because there's a difference between what you pay in the private sector and what you pay in the public sector as well.
And I agree. And it'd be nice to have those figures. And we have to keep in mind that we are a big business. We represent children, but we are a big business. We're the third largest employer in Murray County.
But, but at the same time, we've got other people on, on the skill systems payroll that are underpaid. When are we going to bring them up to, to the standard?
I totally agree with you. We've been trying to, twelve years, ten years, we've been trying.
You know, I think it's unfair to give, give the finance department employees what, what their market value is and tell everybody else, you know, your tough luck, your department didn't create problems.
Totally agree. Let's go to the county commissioner or whoever we have to go to and let's say we need all our salaries raised because we do.
But I think it's up to us to treat our workers equally and equally.
Well, I think we have like an administrator's salary schedule. I think we have like an administrator's salary schedule for the teachers that you're talking about.
Yeah, but some of them are not administrators. But at least, I, I, I know that you, head of our finance department, she's, she's administrative, but the others are not administrative.
Well, and I don't mean that the administrator's salary schedule that was approved by the board handbook or whatever before I was on the board, it's not being followed. So, um, that's something that I think, I mean, I think you bring up a really good point, that we're not, we're trying to address a part of the problem and not address the whole.
We, we have employees that were hired and are working under the administrator's salary schedule, that's board policy, where other administrators have, are personally have been brought in and their salaries have been negotiated. That's not board policy. And so you, you either have a board policy and you don't. And so that board policy exists so that an administrator, a principal, whatever, years of experience and degrees and all that, that's really important in education. So that, those things are significant. So when you start negotiating salaries for some and not for others, it makes for a So, but when you start negotiating salaries for some and not for others, it makes for a inconsistent and right, some salaries may be too high, some too low, it's just not, you know, it's, it's not, it's not an equal process.
Well, and I will just say, I know that a lot of times we think that when the board speaks, board speaks, right? So, when we act, we act. When we approved our budget, we did not approve some of these raises, including the raise for Ms. Gagliano to that level. But then there's still other raises that are being included in here, I mean, that she references in her summary notes, so I'm just curious as to why we continue to push for raises that weren't approved during the budget season. I mean, why is that still being brought to us?
So, so the raises that she's recommending here are what she thinks is what we're going to need to attract quality people to fill those positions. Um, like, for example, um, we've asked for, for feedback from VACO about what they've done since December. Information according in line with what you guys are asking for. The last time we posted for a payroll position, one person applied and that person wasn't qualified, and we had that position posted for over two weeks. So what, what Ms. Gagliano believes that is if we could raise that salary a little bit and make that a little bit more financially competitive, we'll get a better pool of candidates. And then it won't put us in that same payroll position that we found ourselves in over the last year. So these are just her recommendations.
That's not the one I'm talking about though. In her summary, she says the positions of chief of staff and manager of technology could also be funded at the recommended levels.
Yes.
Why is that still in there? I mean, that doesn't have anything to do with her people and finance.
Agreed.
But she's still trying to get raises in here for, for positions that we did not approve at that level, when we said we're not gonna approve raises at central office. So why are we going back to that, is what I don't understand.
So what I'm doing is I'm asking the board to make those improvements to those two positions, because much like I said in April, I'm afraid that we could lose those positions because they're, they're below market value. And, um, so I'm bringing back the recommendation board to make an, to make an adjustment.
It doesn't say CEO recommendations.
These have all been discussed with me, and, and we've worked collaboratively.
It's not very clear though who's bringing that recommendation at that point, that it's not coming from Ms. Gagliano.
Okay.
So, I mean, if that's your recommendation and you want us to approve that, then I feel like that's something that we need to take up on this, I mean, separate from her finance department.
Sure.
Has nothing to do with her finance department.
Okay, we can do that.
I mean, most of the questions that I would have would probably be direct simply to her, I mean, I don't know that there's anybody here that can answer specific questions about these positions.
And I, I, I have to say, I, I think she is someone that we really needed, and I think she's, I have great faith that she's going to try and get everything straight.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know, you know, that her salary, I knew what, know her salary was, I know that this is a great job more than what she got it of where she was and why it was negotiated at that high price, but I'm hoping that she's gonna find enough savings to justify, you know, that, that there's some decreases in things that happen in that office.
Yes.
Funds are, we know where they are, what's going out, what's coming in, and, and we don't have the debacle we had before.
I think savings from fund balance and savings is, I mean, savings from what you spend out of your checking account versus what you spend out of your savings account are different to me, especially when you're considering what she says we needed to have in our savings account at this point, and we're not there yet. We've got a long ways to go, especially when we're adding to the checking account items as well.
So I'm a little confused, if we approve what she has here for this year, what is the amount that we need to come up for this year, is that the?
We don't have to come up with anything for this year, she said that she found savings for this year, but for next year, we would have to come up with an additional hundred and fifty-five thousand.
So she could go ahead and hire for this year? Okay, that we're saying?
Yes.
Okay, but, but we would have to look at those positions for the next legislature.
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
I gotta quit, and it's not directly to the, the, to get it, it is, what's the county commission, I saw they're gonna have a special call being dealing with county finances and a special deal for legislature.
They're bringing up the, the act.
Eighty-one act.
Eighty-one act.
So they back on that.
Yes, they are.
What they've talked to me about is they don't wanna do eighty-one, they don't wanna do fifty-seven, they're looking at a hybrid of the two. And I'm waiting to hear back from Scott Summers concerning what the county commission wants to do. But in conversation with Michael Fulbright, they're in between the two.
Can you explain that to me?
Well, the.
So if you have no idea what the eighty-one or fifty-two is?
The fifty-seven act is currently what we're under, where we have separate finance departments around the state for the separate entities that we have.
Okay.
Um, the eighty-one act will basically combine all of those into, into one entity. You'll still have a modified or small finance department in each of the areas, but this county body will pretty much take over a lot of the financial operations of the entire district. Um, I will sit on a board where we'll meet maybe once or twice a month, where I'll have to sit and decide the budgets of waste management, sheriff's office, school system, um, roads and maintenance. I'll, I'll have to make, I'll have to sit on a board and, and determine budgets and spending for the entire county system. Um, talking to Philip Wright, who's the superintendent of Giles County, it takes a lot of his time every month, um, because those meetings are not being quick and then they're out. And not only that, they, they have to carry over those meetings quite frequently. So it takes a lot of time out of this, out of this schedule every month away from the school system to decide those things for the county. And they, 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 they like the idea of the consolidating, but they don't like the idea of roads having to experiment, school system, school system, concern waste management. They, they don't like that, so, um, that's what they're deliberating, they're going back and forth and trying to decide.
It basically takes the, we would have less control of funds, it basically gives the county commission more, you know, they consolidate it and, and it, it, I, I can't explain exactly, but it's, I don't think it's something we would be hopeful would happen.
I agree with that, and then the person, I think Dr. Morris has got his plate full, just taking care of educating kids.
And I, then talking to Philip, it does slow, creates a little bit more red tape, does slow down the processing of purchasing things, it takes a little bit more time, so.
Anything else on the Monday section?
If you, if you can think of any specific questions you have about the attachments, if you don't, email me or email Karen,
Okay.
we'll, we'll get the information back to you as soon as possible, Karen. She is also working steadily on getting all of the financials for Monday's meeting, but she's currently waiting for reports from the trustee's office in order to generate the Murray County reports, but then to put it on the board meeting. So she's waiting for the trustee's office at this point, so she's trying her best.
Can she also provide us, you know, when VACO was there, Mr. Parliament provided us for a while, any problems that occurred with payroll, we haven't gotten that report in several months. So I know she has mentioned when she's been before, it says she's been dealing with payroll issues, but we as a board don't know what those issues are unless we're made aware of them, so I think it'd be helpful if we get back on to that schedule where she provides that.
Sure, monthly, monthly or after?
We need to have two per month, so. Anything else on finance? Well, I think the rest of it is just FII, so. Everything else, can I just?
Now before I come to the. Before y'all leave, I know I sound crazy, but I think that's used restroom, and Tommy just took me to the restroom, so I'm like, this is Central High School, brand new bathroom, we were just talking about GCS. The young lady is cleaning the women's restroom, right? And I asked her, can I use the men's, cause I'm about to be on my bed. She said, go right ahead. This is a high school. The first stall, traumatized, second stall, literally had spook in it. Third stall, there is chip bags with the chips out on the floor and someone had stepped on the chips. This is a high school, so I know that it's probably difficult to get employees for a company to clean, but there's got to be a level of respect from students. That is ridiculous, chips on the ground, stepped on, and this is not an elementary school. Poop. I wouldn't prepare for that. Is it door? So it may not just be a GCS issue, it could be an issue of us making sure that students understand that they need to take pride in something, and Lord forbid something that's brand new.
I've said some of that all along, it might not be all GCS's problem, it may be the condition we believe in.
And I'm going to go tell her, honey, I did not, this is not me. He can tell you, I know the one I had spoke to, hey, how you doing? And then I go in there and come out and this is what it's left on.